Hello. Hello. Welcome, everybody. I'm John Higley. I'm chairman of the planning board. And this is a planning board meeting although our only agenda item is simply to facilitate this discussion. So I'll declare our meeting open, the planning board meeting open. And as I say, this is, the planning board's role here is just to facilitate the discussion. This is being televised, so welcome, everybody who's watching at home. The discussion is about a development project at 41 North Main and Hunting. This is October 25th, 2018. So, really, I guess with all meetings, we're really looking forward to really good discussion. And I just want to remind everybody, when you do speak, to identify yourself and your address. And I'm just going to turn the meeting over to Andrew Consigli and let him introduce themselves and how they want to go forward.
Can everyone hear me? Okay? No. Can everyone hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing? Think we got it. Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate all you spending your evening here. I'm Andrew Consigli, an architect and developer consultant to the LeBarskis, who own the parts like 41 North Main Street from Civicco Development. And if those of you aren't familiar with me, I helped with a project at Abbey Road, right next to the, you know, the Peace Abbey, the old Peace Abbey. And I've been part of this project now probably for about a year and a half, kind of going through different ideas, listening to feedback. And it's been great feedback, so hopefully we'll continue that conversation tonight. So it's right here, Gary LeBarski, owner of the land. He approached myself probably a year and a half, two years ago, to help lead an effort to develop the land at 41 North Main Street. And previously, if a lot of you haven't, don't know, the land was owned previously by Ken Fitzpatrick, who previously tried to develop the land. And also, there was other developers who also were sort of taking stabs at this throughout the past, I guess, 20 years. So Gary actually owns the land now. He owns land on Hunting Lane as well, a house that he lives in. His wife runs a day spa on North Main Street. And he was a longtime resident with him and his family in Sherborn. So I'm here representing him in his, in his family's vision for the property of 41 North Main Street. So tonight, I want to go over sort of a few topics. You know, Sherborn Square is what we're calling the development on the newer side of the tracks, which is along North Main Street. And it's going to consist of retail, assisted living, and possibly a food market and a restaurant. We're going to talk about the benefits and concerns of the plan, the infrastructure options, meaning the wastewater, and whether it's septic or wastewater, or wells and public water supply. There's a few options here that we're going to go through and talk about. And then also, why now? Why this group? Where there's been a lot of groups that have come here and talked about this parcel. This is sort of the last large remaining parcel in the town center. Significant piece of land, and obviously requires a lot of attention. So we're going to try to walk through the presentation in what exactly we're imposing on this land. Everyone can still hear me okay, now that there's more people in back?
I don't think the mic is actually picking you up at all.
Okay. Is it? You've got to get it real close, so I'll just hold it. So this is the parcel at 41 North Main Street. And this is a six acre parcel of land. It's right adjacent to the Heritage, which used to be the old Sherborn Inn. You can see on the top of the page, it's running left to right is North Main Street. And the Elliott Street, where the circle is in the junction that goes east, is up on the top of the page. To the right, actually, oh, I should have a pointer. But does anyone have a pointer? You do? You don't? It's okay if you don't, I can probably talk to it. No? Okay, I'll just talk to it then. So the Heritage is to the right. To the left is the six acre parcel. The train tracks are on the bottom of the page, sort of as a curve. There's additional land out to the east, I'm sorry, out to the west, that Gary also owns. Our focus tonight will be on the five, six acre parcel here. The historic house is, the tavern is up on North Main Street. And it's right next to where the entry drive would come in, along the, right where the junction is where the two red lines meet. We're also proposing assisted living facility to the left. You see this larger building that would be two stories tall and be an assisted living or a memory care type of facility. The market, which would be a food market, small, you know, local food market. We intend to actually reuse the barn that's there into some component of the food market. And there's also a cafe and potentially some additional retail, service retail. And then you can see in the back, there's a lot of parking that would help with the, meet the parking requirements for the market, and also the assisted living. This is the view that you see of the old historic house, which would be converted into a restaurant. What I really want to show on this slide also is the buffer of trees that we wouldn't be touching, so the existing buffer would remain to the right of, to the right of the page, the tall pines. And to go back to the plan, you can see it's about a hundred foot setback before we even get to the driveway for the assisted living in the project. This is an example of a similar assisted living project up in Riverbend, up in Salem, called The Residence at Riverbend. Two stories tall, fits in within the current character of the town, broken up, so it's not one big monolithic structure, very sort of farmhouse style. Sin to say it's going to be exactly like this, but it's the same type of vernacular and feel and character, because it's going to be visible, you know, from the, from North Main Street. This is the type of market. Some of you might be familiar with this. This is in the Pine Hills down in Plymouth. This is the local food market there. We have a current barn onsite right now that we, like I said, we tried to incorporate into the project. And this would be sort of the farmhouse type of style that we would try to look for. You know, big open doors that open up and, you know, potentially some sort of cafe within that. And then also, you know, selling local food as well. So, benefits of the project. Tax revenue from the project, I think, will help greatly. As many of you know, that Sherborn has the highest taxes in the state. And we feel this project would really help with, you know, help it, help with that. And the renovation and reuse of existing house into a restaurant. We've done projects before, particularly, you know, with Abbey Road and the library. We've done renovations of old buildings. And we'd be looking to this house to reuse, save in the exact place it is, and turn it into another dining option, you know, with the Heritage as well. And the farmer's market, as I talked about, featuring local food. And all this generally promotes a walkable and vibrant town center. The more action that you have, the more people walking around, the more people on the street, the more vibrant the town center's going to feel. And, and also, you know, the cars that are currently on the site, or on the streets, which is probably around 29,000 per day, 26,000 to 29,000 per day, those are going to other places for their services. They're going to Natick, they're going to Medfield, Holliston. And this is a way to where we can capture that within this town. I don't think that there will be other towns coming to the site. There'd probably be more for Sherborn and the people that are passing through. So we hope that this, and I'll get to this in the next slides, is, is some of the concerns are always about traffic. And so, we feel, and we'll do this, we'll do our due diligence with them for a traffic study, but we feel this is going to add a significant amount of cars, particularly because it's an assisted living facility. It's not apartments, it's, you know, other than the employees that will be coming and going, we don't feel there'll be a lot of increased traffic. With the retail and the market, we feel that the cars will be coming in, will be coming off of the street that are already there. We don't feel it would be a destination type of retail environment. But again, we have to do our, our part and hire a traffic engineer and do a study to, to show the numbers of exactly what the impact will be. It's, you know, everyone talks about the look and the, and the character and the feel of the town center. This is very important as an architect. I try to look at, that's one of the things I look at first. So when, when Gary tells, you know, or the client tells me to look at an assisted living facility and a market, I, the first thing I try to do is, you know, what will it look like? Will it fit within the town center? You don't want it to be sticking out or out of scale. So this is something that, is definitely a concern, and I understand this, and we will work hard to make sure that it does fit within the town center. Affordable housing is a hot topic, obviously. We do have more information than we did last time about the affordable housing and how the assisted living counts towards that. We'd be happy to answer kind of more, more questions about that and offer feedback. And then also environmental concerns. You know, anything, any type of development, you know, environmental concerns come up, particularly when you have, you know, septics and wells within the town. So we would like to talk more about that and provide more information about the alternatives that we're proposing, and also if we were to just go forward with the traditional wells in septic for the, for the project. So the infrastructure, which is the water and sewer. Option one that we're thinking about, or proposing right now, is the traditional option, which is the traditional septic field on our site, and a private well water on our site as well. The, the second option would be the developer and the town as a partnership. I know through the years, the town has looked into many and done many studies about how public infrastructure could be had within the downtown area, the town center, for a lot of reasons and good reasons. And so, as a town resident who cares about his town and, and wants to see this project come through, for good reason, you know, we're, we're looking at this as a partnership with the town and potentially, you know, a win-win situation. And we'll kind of go through that throughout the presentation, talk about that. So the idea would be to have a wastewater treatment facility where the town, you know, for the town center, and then also a public water supply for the town center. I mean, the town center, I mean, South Main Street, North Main Street, our project, and potentially the municipal buildings, including schools and so on. These are some, some maps up here. You can see on the right-hand side, it is North Main Street with our project up on the top right-hand side, which is Sherborn Square. I labeled the fire station, the ball fields, and also Pine Hill School. On the left-hand side, you'll see the, the map showing Town Hall, South Main Street, the Town Hall, the police station, the library, and then sort of south of that would be the, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts and, and some other retailer as well. But the, the businesses would share in this, municipal buildings would share in this, the churches, also the town residences, and our project would be included in this infrastructure plan. Particularly would be, and the reason why I say a public-private partnership is, we're proposing to use the ball fields, the current ball fields, next to the Pine, the Pine Hill School, for the infrastructure, for the, for the wastewater treatment fields and the, and the actual building itself. And the idea is that, that I would, and I don't know exactly the numbers yet, but the town would use a majority of the, of the wastewater treatment facility, and we would tap into that. And so forth, so would the additional businesses, in the municipal buildings, churches, and so forth. So we're trying to create a win-win situation here, where it helps us and also helps the town significantly. This is the, the Pine Hill School, where the ball fields are, next to the Pine Hill School. The idea is that the septic fields would go in the ground, they wouldn't be seen. You can see the treatment plant and pump house to the bottom of the screen. And this would be enough for the town center, and also, there is expandable area within the, within the fields to put more. And we've actually done some tests, and the soils are really good in this area, and are positive for this type of facility. Our project would be to the north of that, and we would tap into this system. And so, let's see here. So why the town needs this? As I mentioned, highest taxes in the state, I believe I'm, I'm not from the town, but I believe that's accurate. But will this development and also the, the public infrastructure, this will all promote positive economic development. Right now, it seems like there's a lack of current services. People always talk about having a food market in town, not having to go to Natick or Holliston or wherever else to go to, to get their food, and also additional dining options. I know that the Heritage is very popular, and it's always great to sort of get restaurants in a cluster environment where you can have dining options. That's all in, you know, trying to promote a walkable, vibrant downtown. The updating infrastructure will be costly and difficult effects. The current septic systems are very close to existing wells, and, you know, if the septics fail, it's going to be very costly to replace, especially given that they're out of performance right now. So the idea to have a wastewater treatment facility that you can tap into, we see that as a big benefit. Also, health concerns. The health concerns of having the septic system, septic's right next to the wells is a major health concern. It's something that right now is, is not conforming to Massachusetts, Massachusetts standards. And we have Ray from Onsite here, who can kind of talk a little bit more about that when the questions come up. But health concerns is, as everyone knows, with septic and wells is a major concern. This is from, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but this is from the Town Center Housing Report. And essentially, I'll just read the top, but it says, "Continued exploration and progress towards infrastructure improvements for the town center, including the provision of a water and wastewater district." It goes on to say, "The study highlights the limited availability of opportunities to invest in the improvement of the properties in the town center, and the potential for public health risks that may be associated with onsite sewage treatment and drinking water in close proximity with the town, with the town center." So this just, this is from the town, and I believe the, the, it was created for the Town Center Housing Report, and we're looking to this as sort of guidance. We're looking to options to make something like this feasible. So why now? Why this group? As I mentioned, Gary and his family own the land. There's a limited window of opportunity. Something's going to be done on this site. And whether it's as of right, whether it's, you know, through the plan board and variances and, or whether we go through a town meeting vote, we're going to, Gary is, is looking to develop this site into something. And also, we've done years and years, not me, but the town has done years and years of studies about wastewater treatment facilities and, and public water supplies. And so, we'd like to, you know, take action and actually make, you know, make advancement on these and not do any more studies. We want to be proactive and not reactive if current septic systems fail. The LeBarskis are Sherborn residents and owners of the land. You know, I really understand that because, particularly with, working with Bob Murchison on Abbey Road, when Bob first started that project, he went around and asked a lot of the people, you know, what residents, what do we want there? Do we want single-family homes? Do we want? And it came about, a lot of people were asking for senior housing. And he took that and actually made it work with the help of me, and is a successful project. But if you actually looked at our books right now, you'd actually say, why'd you do it? So I actually, a lot of other developers, I work as a developer, and I see a lot of developers around the state. This to me is a little bit more mission-driven, I think, because he's from the town, the family's from the town. And he wants to see this as a win-win. And so, we're here to, to show you that this is a good plan. And there's a lot of details that will come in, a lot of questions that have to come up, especially about the financials that we can get into. But this is sort of an overview of the project, and kind of want to take your feedback and, you know, your questions, and hopefully answer them, so you feel comfortable with, with our plan. And then Civicco, myself, you know, I helped with Bob and the, on the project Abbey Road is successful, and, you know, so I have a proven track record of working with the town. And what we'd like to do is really start a community outreach program where we're informing everyone of exactly what the plan is. So the next steps. Then work with the leaders, the town leaders on a win-win financial arrangement. Have a traffic study done and a financial impact analysis done. Produce engineering and architectural plans. And then, as I mentioned, begin an outreach campaign to inform and engage the community. So those are our next steps. And now, I'd probably, you know, we would like to take any questions and feedback that you have. As I mentioned, we have Ray here from Onsite, who specializes in the wastewater treatment facilities and the septic systems. And we also have Pam Brown, who I forgot to mention, sorry. Pam Brown, who is our legal representation, but also a planner as well. So have at it.
Do you have an estimate of the tax revenue the town can expect from this project, given it's built the way that you expect it to be built?
We don't yet. And what that?
Can you give back?
Yep. Sorry. So the question, the question was, do we have an idea of the tax revenue that will be generated from this development, the one that we have up on the screen, or proposed? And at this time, we do not. And the reason being is we would have to, we would have to do a economic impact analysis. And, you know, that, that is something that we haven't done yet, and we need to start doing. We wanted to get here first and get some more feedback before we committed to doing that, because it does, there's a certain amount of cost that are incurred on the developer. But that is one of our next steps, is to actually figure out what is the math, what is the tax revenue, what are the impacts, and, and, you know, hopefully it will come out positive. That's what we, that's what we expect. Yes?
I have a small detail on the size of those facilities we're proposing. I've seen everything from 120 beds to 100 plus on the assisted living, and the numbers on the retail seem to change, and so can you bring that down for us, please?
Absolutely. So, starting with the, oh, sorry. It was asked, how much retail, how much square footage of, or beds, units of assisted living? That was the two, right?
Actually, yeah. Sorry. Do I have your attention? This microphone works. So if it's, if it makes sense, we can, someone, if you want to ask a question, maybe come up and, don't get too close to this, but ask, ask, that, that way everybody should be able to hear. The other thing is, I'll re-
I love that we're not all sitting here craning our-
Yeah, so if you want to ask a question, maybe just come up, I'll, I'll move. The other thing is, I'll, I'll remind Richard and Peggy and others to identify yourself as, just as we go forward, just make sure you do that.
Is this better? Do I have to do the presentation over again? No? So the question was, how many units are within the assisted living that we're proposing, facility we're proposing, and also, how much retail that we're looking at currently drawn? Because she mentioned that it's been changing a couple of times, and for good reason. And so, the amount of retail, I'll start with the retail first. The retail is anywhere between 20 and 25,000 square feet. Particularly, that's, that includes about an 8,000 to 10,000 square foot market. It includes the, the house, the renovated house into a restaurant, and also a potential cafe. So those, that's, and we're still playing around with some of the, the sizes of the spaces, but generally 20 to 25,000 square feet of retail. And then the assisted living is anywhere, we started with 80 beds, and that would be more of a memory care type of facility, going up to about 120 beds, which would be more of an assisted living facility. But generally, we're looking at around two stories in height. And it just depends, it depends really on the, on the infrastructure, because if we do have to put septic fields, that does take up space, and we would have to condense it a little bit, and potentially could get higher. And so, the idea of having public infrastructure off our site, we could, we could maximize the amount that's there, but also bring the height down as well to keep, you know, within the character of the community. So there's some, there's some movement that, that's going on the plan, depending on which direction we go with the infrastructure. Yes?
You mentioned assisted living or memory care. Oh, sorry, John Garrison, 3300. I've heard conflicting opinions about if it's assisted living, it does help us with our affordable housing issues, and if it's memory care, it would not, or vice versa. Can you address that or anything?
Yeah, I'm actually going to have Pam address this, because she knows more about it.
So the question was, the difference between assisted living and memory care, and how the units may or may not count for your affordable housing stock. Assisted living is a little bit an open jury, but ultimately, I mean, obviously, first, the units would have to be restricted income-wise and available. So oftentimes, a portion of the units can be made available to more limited incomes. And if that's done, then we need to convince the state that the, the project or that those units are sufficient to count towards your affordable housing stock. And there's an application process that's really just logistics and processing that through. In terms of whether the units are counted in part of your housing stock, so the denominator, unfortunately, kind of the same answer. The census has been going back and forth. I'm sure there's people in the room that can speak to, like, the building code, for example, defines a dwelling unit as having both a kitchen and plumbing facilities. Most assisted living units have some limited, you know, refrigerator, or hot plate, or maybe a microwave, but they're serving three meals a day. So my opinion is, if we were to do assisted living, that we can make the argument that, because I think really what's happening is it's almost a case-by-case basis. We can make the argument that, in fact, and we could probably limit as well, what's being provided, because it is 100 units over your 1,500 or less dwelling units in town is a significant number. So I think we fully understand the concern about what I call watering down, if you will, but if, you know, whatever your affordable housing stock is, if you increase the denominator, now you need more affordable units. So we're tuned into that. I'm doing some more research on it, and I think at some point, when we get a little closer to understanding, you know, maybe solving the infrastructure question first, so we know what we're targeting in terms of the assisted living or memory care, we will then start talking to the public agencies that would be the decision-makers on that. So I'm sorry, I don't have a black and white answer for you, but we do understand the issue. Yes?
This is just Mary and I, Prospect Street, I'll drop my mic. There's just a follow-up question. You didn't address the assisted living versus memory care problem. And our understanding is that memory care would not have kitchen facilities, and they, they might be counted differently. So, and I want to ask you for the whole question. What's the legal precedence? I know it's case-by-case, but what's been decided in the past?
On both of them, neither of them counted towards your dwelling units in the 2000 census. So that's changed a little bit, but in 2010, it was, I think, some of each. But you're correct. With no kitchen facilities, typically, these are treated as institutional uses. We could even talk with the town building inspector to determine how he might categorize it, but I don't know, I'm not sure if you have any other facilities like this in town. I don't believe so. So that's something we're going to look into a little bit more. So, that's something we're gonna look into a little bit more. Memory care very often has no kitchen facilities at all. The assisted living probably has more, but I equate it to more like a college dorm room, where you might have a fridge, or a hot plate, or, I haven't seen microwaves, but who knows? Things change in modern times. So...
Can I ask, has the state made a decision on any memory care facility that you know of in the state regarding SHI?
I have not researched it thoroughly. I'm not aware of any. And I know the state has been, DHCD has been considering whether to count affordable, any affordable units towards your affordable housing stock, your subsidized housing inventory. So, those are a number of things we need to try to follow up on and get more detail on.
One of the, one of the operators who expressed interest in working with us on the project in terms of a memory care facility, just, just built one in Reading, and said that they did not count, because it was memory care, did not count towards. So, that's, you know, I don't have a case law or anything like that, but I believe they went through it successfully.
I think we could get some more case studies.
Yeah.
I was waiting 28 miles to drive. Can we ride a couple minutes into your presentation? So, we may already have touched on this, but could you elaborate on who would run the facility, since it is assisted or memory care? Or if you have a variety of partners you're talking to, what their bona fides are for a variety of facilities of this nature, so it would be successful?
So, I didn't hear the first part, but I'm gonna try. I believe it was, what type of management would the assisted living facility or memory care facility be under? Whether it would be us running it, whether it would be a separate company running it? It would be a separate company running it. There's many companies out there, like Benchmark, LCB, you know, Salmon Health, that, you know, have, or have shown interest in this site before. So, that's, that's who it would be, it would be a separate company. Wouldn't be us at the developer. We would, we would sort of sell or lease the land to them, to come build their facility.
So, as a follow-up, what stage in the process could that be finalized as it relates to decisions that either our boards need to make or the town's...
So, we would like to get a little further down the road in terms of what the infrastructure requirements are. And that's why we're focused, we're sort of focusing on this tonight as well, is, once we have an idea of the infrastructure, whether we need septic fields, or whether we can tap into and create a partnership with the town on a wastewater treatment facility, that would shape the development plan. And so, right now, we're, we're not at that point. And so, once we decide, or have a good idea of where we're going with the wastewater infrastructure, we can, we can make some decisions on who actually would be coming in here, whether it would be a memory care, or assisted living operator, and who the operator would be.
I'm Richard Robinson, 170 Hill Street. Now, you mentioned a second parcel, which is not part of your presentation tonight. Are those two projects either legally or developmentally linked? Are they independently viable, or is development on one dependent on development area?
So, we're thinking of them as independent...
Can you repeat the question?
Thank you. Sorry. The question was, the parcel that is, would be west of the tracks, do we see that as independent in terms of permitting and part of this project? Or would it be combined, or combined, or is it, or is it separated? We, we do see this as independently, but from the five or six acre parcel, the, on North Main Street, and the retail and the assisted living, you know, we are thinking this as a whole master plan as well, to create a vibrant town center. You know, potentially, there could be some housing on that. We haven't really touched on that and figured that out, exactly what type of housing, how much. There's a significant amount of wetlands over there. The infrastructure also has a big part to do with it. We have an idea of, potentially, if we have to do wells, we can do wells over there for the town center project. So, again, it's, the driver really is the infrastructure. We can start making decisions and provide more detail, once we kind of have a good idea of what the infrastructure requirements are, whether we need more land, whether we don't. You know, that, that's, that's the real question, but, yes?
Jay Sauer, 24 Elliott. To refer to them as independent, I want to go back to the original proposal, a couple years back, where it just, it was a... It had living units, 35, I believe, on the North Main site, along the retail, along the wastewater treatment plant. But, oh, by the way, the only way to make that economically feasible is with 135 housing units on Hunting Lane property. So, are you saying that 41 North Main is economically feasible on its own?
We haven't dug down so much into the, the financials of them being combined. I would say that it is actually, I think it's financially feasible to do the assisted living, depending on what type of facility it is. You know, how much retail, and what type of market comes in. You know, what type of restaurant comes in. You know, what, what, how much we could lease the land or sell the land for, to the assisted living operator. So, yes, it can be independent, and it probably, from, from what we have seen in terms of the prices, that we could get for the land for the assisted living facility, or memory care facility, I think at this time, we, it could be feasible. But because we're still so up in the air about the infrastructure, which is the significant amount of cost, development costs, we just don't know. We haven't run those models yet. Yes?
I guess Neil Tesla, 43 Page Farm Road. I'm also on the Conservation Commission. We have before us right now an NOI for a public water supply well on Hunting Lane, just behind the North Main Street property. And I'm just curious, if, in doing testing for that well, if it doesn't yield what you need, the 20,000 gallons, I'm curious, what is the alternative? You talked about sinking private wells. I'm just wondering, where they would be, how many they would be, and just what your alternatives are, if you don't get that kind of yield out of public water supply?
Yeah. I think, well, one of the options is to join in with the town in a partnership to do a public water supply. Yep. Oh, sorry. The question, I keep forgetting that. The question was, we, from, he's from the Conservation Commission, and there currently is an NOI in process, that the developer would like to go across the tracks on that, on the Hunting, Hunting Lane land, and test for a well. And if we don't get the expected yield from that well, what other options do we have? And so, I mean, first, we have to see if that is actually viable, if, if we're actually getting the yield out of that well. And then, we would take step number two, and figure out if there is an option for any other place for a well, which also meets the requirements and setbacks and distances for our development. And then, the third option is one that we're proposing tonight, where the town, which is in need of a public water supply, we would go into partnership with the town and build a public water supply, which would help us and also help the town.
It would be somewhere else?
Yes, it would be somewhere else. Yep. Exactly.
Work with the town, go to a public water supply.
Exactly. Yep. Yes?
Yeah, John Garrison, 3300. So, just focusing on the waste water, and public-private partnership action. Leaving aside the question of who pays how much for what, do you have even a ballpark figure, in order of magnitude we're talking about?
Yeah. For wastewater treatment, question? I got it. Do we have a, putting, putting aside all the financial arrangements, which would go into a public-private partnership, what would be the expected costs of a wastewater treatment facility? And, yes, we've done preliminary costs on that, and that would be in the range of 1.5 million to $2 million. There is an annual cost, obviously, to the upkeep and the operation, but that's generally what we're, what we're seeing here. Question?
Steven Nott, 32 North Main Street. Question might be, I'm sure, but you have a slide up there that shows the proposal for where the water treatment plant would be. In order to put that in place, do you need to take any private property, either on North Main or Elliott Street, either by buying it or, I'm gonna donate to make that out?
Pam, Pam, do you want to answer this question? And the question was, is do we have, if we're proposing the, the treatment facility on the ball fields, do we have to take any additional land or easements, or what are the, the legal property aspects that we have to go through to make that possible?
So, I think that, actually, first part of the question was private land. And I don't believe we need to do any takings, easements, or anything to get across the street into the town land. Is that correct? Okay. So, the other issue that's come up, and I don't know if that's what you were alluding to, is something we call Article 97. Article 97 is in the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, and it gives the public the right to clean air and water, and enjoyment of environmental resources, and so on. What triggers Article 97, or first, let me say what it requires. If you trigger Article 97, if a property is protected, if you will, under Article 97 as a public park, it then requires a two-thirds vote of the Massachusetts State Legislature, both, both houses, House and Senate, to release that land. The best, probably, example of this is when you see towns desperate for school properties. And now, they're taking park land and trying to convert the park land for a public school. Here, even if we concede that the land, it's my understanding that the land was donated to the town for a park. It's ball fields, which actually, the courts have distinguished somewhat from playgrounds and active fields, somewhat differently than just open space or parks. But even if we assume for the minute that Article 97 applies to the ball field parcel, what we're doing doesn't create a change in use. And it's really only the change in use that requires the legislative approval. There was even, there was a case in Bill Ricker, where the town actually granted a lease for a cell tower on a playground parcel. And the, the courts, the SJC, actually, actually, that one was not SJC, I'm sorry, but the court actually determined that a playground was not a park, and said the town had full right to do it without going through this process. We've vetted this significantly, and I've read, I think, all of the relevant cases that apply, and I don't want to get into legal lease right now, but the opinion of everyone I've spoken to, other attorneys that are in this practice area, some of the town officials, we're not, by doing, because essentially, we're not changing the ball fields. We're not, in fact, the location of the septic fields at this time are actually between the fields. Worst case, we have a temporary interruption. Well, there's construction going on, but everything's underground. There is the possibility that the treatment plant building could be elsewhere, if necessary, if that becomes an issue for the town. But we actually don't believe that building a, a treatment plant building would actually trigger this either, because it's just an accessory structure on a field that's not changing the existing use. I'm happy to answer more questions. I don't want to get into too much legal lease on this, but, yeah.
You said you sleep to Elliott Street. Are these slides available anywhere online? It's very hard to see.
So, this, this is, this, the question is, will these slides be up for viewing afterwards, or public, where can we access them afterwards? And this is a live, right, live streamed? And I believe there'll be a YouTube video showing these slides, but I'll also be sending this to the planning department, Gino? I don't know from there, where they could access this presentation, but I'll be sending it to you. And...
Anybody who, after he says it to me, if you don't want to look it up on YouTube, because it might be easier to, to view directly as the, as the presentation, rather than the whole meeting, I can send, I can forward it on. I think take is already...
What about posting slides? Just the slides on the planning board?
Well, you can put it on the town website. Yeah, it'll be on the town website. That way, it's easier. Everybody will have the access.
Okay. Question right here?
Well, Kiki O'41, 100 Main. Andrew, I was a little confused about your response to Jay earlier, in terms of whether Project Sherwood Square is separate from the land property, and whether it's economically viable without any kind of land property. And you also alluded to a master plan. As you mentioned, the developer owns the two-man parcel, 41 North Main Street, the salon, North Main Street. Rumor has it that the developer was interested in buying the Herogen, the Douse property, which goes up to Green Lane. So, you mentioned a master plan.
Yep.
And I think that should be disclosed and...
Yeah. So, when I mean master planned, I'm talking from a, specifically from a planner, urban design, architect standpoint. When I, when I come in and look at town centers, there's different synergies between different uses. And residences and housing helps, you know, service the, the retail and the restaurants. And the restaurants create outdoor dining, which create a, you know, a lively environment. You know, town center buildings, municipal buildings within, like this, within the town center activate, you know, there's a whole bunch of synergies that create a real, you know, lively downtown. So, when I say master plan, I'm not pointing to the fact that the Lebarskis are trying to assemble all the land in Sherborne to create something, that's not what I'm alluding to. It's more about, I'm trying to personally, as an architect and urban designer, see if there's a way to add development to the downtown area, where it will promote and create a great place to shop, eat, dine, you know, whether, go see your, someone's grandparents at the assisted living facility, and then go grab some lunch. Go to a town meeting, and then go to a bar afterwards. I mean, just all these different things that create, just create a really nice, cool downtown area with a lot of options. And also, specifically, the food market. You know, there's no option in town to, to buy food anywhere, other than going to a price shopper. I mean, there's, there's obviously options, but they're limited. And so, a market's a huge aspect of this project, just to be able to meet people, buy food. I mean, it's, it's, it could be a great thing, so...
I was really getting at that. I was getting at phase one, phase two.
Okay. Yeah.
And to hear everything that...
And the question is, is, in terms of the phase one and phase two, we are concentrating on the town center, particularly. There is all the land across the tracks that potentially could be developable land. There also is other parcels in town that are developable, that, that, you know, that are looked at by developers. So, it, I believe it is independent. And to bring up the, the point about, is it economically feasible? I believe it is. Who knows, until, you know, we talk to an assisted living operator and tells us how much they're willing to spend? I mean, this site is a, has historically been looked at by numbers and numbers of developers looking at this for assisted living operators. And, you know, if, if, if we were able to add a restaurant, a market, and, you know, other things, I mean, this, it could be even worth more. So, we don't know if it's, if it's...
Is that feasible for the town? So, is that always fine?
Absolutely. And that's, that's the next step, is, is the economic feasibility study, impact analysis is what we do. So, speaking on behalf of Gary, as, and also as a developer, you, you go through a process of analyzing a site and seeing if the project works or not. And right now, he owns the land, which is a huge plus, because he doesn't have to pay, well, he's paying money on it, because obviously, he's carrying it. But somebody else doesn't own it. He's not contingent on approvals. And, but it also, to take it through permitting, he has to put up money to pay for consultants and do the economic impact analysis. And so, what Gary is doing is, is trying to reach out to the public first and shape the plan, and then spending his money on the consultants, you know, once, once he finds out if he, he has support for the project. There's no reason to do, do it first, because it's, it's gambling. It's, it's, you don't want to do the economic impact analysis on a particular development, and then go to the town, and then the town says, oh, we want something different. Then you get to go do the impact analysis again. Same thing with the traffic study. I think he's coming here, we're coming here, kind of trying to work collaboratively and say, what, what do we want on this, on this land? You know, what, what kind of layout? How can we make it work from a, from an infrastructure standpoint? That's kind of what we're trying to... That's kind of what we're trying to say here first. Yes?
So I'm Charlie Sapunaro, 28 Hunting Lane. My question along those lines about infrastructure and the restaurants and the retailers, why does it scale have to be so large? Why can't you eliminate the assisted living facility and do the other things?
Yeah, there is, the question was, why do we have to propose such a large development? Can we get rid of the assisted living complex? Well, there's a certain critical mass that you need to make the project even somewhat feasible, just doing back of a napkin analysis. The land costs it a certain amount. And what we're trying to do are, is develop something that is in character with the town that isn't more than two stories, that, you know, isn't more than 25,000 square feet. We're talking about a 10,000 square foot market. That's a small market. Most markets are between probably, you know, six and 12,000 square feet. Small markets like this, independent markets. So for us to do a smaller market, it really wouldn't be feasible. For us to do, you know, a smaller assisted living, there's a critical mass that most assisted living operators look for. You don't see many assisted living operators building 50 units, you know, 30 units. They're all above sort of 80. A memory care, the, the people that we've been talking, the operators we've been talking to about the memory care, this would be their smallest facility, and they just built one in writing that was 80 beds. So we're trying to put the pieces together and also make it work financially. You know, so.
Do you assume any of that's going to generate more revenue than it does now? Right? There's no retail on there now?
There's no retail on there now, exactly. Retail, retail in this location, kind of putting my developer hat on, it probably won't make much money, much revenue. It's really the assisted living operation that will really create the revenue for the developer. That's just, that's typically how it goes. There isn't enough critical mass of retail here to, to really make it a very profitable project.
What's the number of beds that you have to get to really break even? You've got to have some back of the envelope.
No, absolutely. It's, it's not so much about the number of beds that we want, it's, it's what the market out there, because we're not in the assisted living or memory care operation. We don't own businesses. We, that's not what we do. We, we try to attract operators, like, like a benchmark, for example, who does a lot of assisted living facilities around Massachusetts and the country. They, they will only build a certain amount of units. You know, they won't build 40 units, 30 units. I mean, I think 80 actually is the, the minimum amount, is what I've heard that from memory care. Or it's not worth them coming in and building the infrastructure, because the infrastructure costs the same, whether it's 80 beds or 120 beds for that, for that operator. So it's really about, you know, we have to meet a certain threshold first. We can't go below that, because it just, you won't attract anyone. It's like, it's like a market. You, you're not going to get a 2,000 square foot market, because there's not many 2,000 square foot markets out there. But you will get a bunch of 8,000 square foot markets, because there's, you know, when you, you know, that's kind of how it, how it goes, I guess. Question?
It sounds like you've talked to some memory care and assisted living partners. What about for the market? I know in the early stages of Abbey Road, you're talking about that as mixed use, and because it was on the northbound side, that made it less attractive. Have you approached, are there any folks interested in this market location?
We have. We've gone out, and we've had really good kind of feedback. And the conversations that we've had is exactly what I've, sorry, I should have repeated the question. The, the question was about, you know, looking back at like Abbey Road, for example, we potentially could have had, we could have had a market there. So now, you know, have we gone up and talked to markets now for this particular site? And we have. We, we got really good feedback on this. And it goes back to what you, we were just talking about, their, what their requirements are. You know, they want to be above 6,000 square feet, or it's not worth them coming in with their operation, doing it. There, you know, if we go over a certain amount of square footage, then we get into the bigger price choppers or the, or the smaller, sort of larger, smaller national chains. What we're looking for here is more of a mom and pop farmer's market style, which is within the 6,000 to 12,000 square foot range. And we definitely have some interested people. They're more, they're more, the types are, they have maybe another one in another town that they want to open a second branch. It's that type of operator. It's not one that has tons of stores around.
A marketer or vacant.
Exactly. And then they would, yeah, it's not specifically them, but they want to open a second store, because they, you know, they're successful in that town. Question?
Yeah, my name is Donal Sapunaro. I live on 28 Hunting Lane. So it sounds like you have had some dialogue with folks and tenants. Could you identify for us who you have spoken to in terms of retailers and market people and all those other folks that you mentioned that are potentially tenant?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think I can give that information right now, because a lot of it's confidential, and there's competition out there, and.
Questions.
Oh, I always forget, jeez. I know, just every time. I'm so, I'm so excited to answer the question, so. The question is, is can we divulge any information on the particular operators that we have been talking to, whether it's in the memory care, assisted living, retail markets and so forth? I, I. Yeah, as a.
Where are you looking to move into these spots?
Yeah. I don't think, I can't really say the exact names of the, of the stores, because I, because there is obviously competition, and that's just not right for them, fair to them right now. But the type of, the type of food market, it's kind, you know, I sort of just explained, sort of the, the independent second, third store type of market facility would, would go in the market. The type of, like a cafe would be someone, we just did a project in, in Havrell where, you know, the, it took us about a half a year, six months to find, but it was someone that just wanted to open a coffee shop and get out of the nine to five job. And it's a very successful coffee shop now. It's that type of mom and pop retail that I think would work for. We're not looking at Gap. We're not looking at, you know, we're not looking at Starbucks or CVS. That isn't the type of, you know, retailers that we're looking at here. Question?
Carol Mills, 39 Hunting Lane. Will you have to change the zoning to do all of this?
Pam?
I'm not, she's going to repeat the question.
The question was, will we need to change the zoning? At the moment, it looks like we can actually work within the zoning that's on the books. Hypothetically, down the road, if, for example, we came, I think your limit on retail is 2,500 square feet. A lot of towns have some smaller limits. Many towns are bumping that up. They still, they don't want the big boxes, they don't want the major chains. But sometimes, I know, I live in Bedford, and Bedford, it's been 2,000, we just upped it to four. So, you know, we weren't looking to go to 10. Just as a metric, your typical CVS is about 10 or 10 to 12,000 square feet. So that's bigger, but not enormous. So if we're talking about 2,500, 3,000 square feet, I think our thinking process is, will, when we figure out what we're doing with infrastructure, and we start designing the project in more detail, we will design it with those smaller spaces so that we can work through permitting. And then if we find a great retailer, that's something that we think the town would like, then we would have to come back and go through town meeting to change that number. There's really no ability to just waive it through this process. But right now, it looks like the site itself can meet the criteria for an eligible site to go through the PUD zoning, and the uses are obviously a fit for what we're proposing.
And this is for the assisted living facility also?
Assisted living's allowed in that zone? I think so.
I don't.
You know? Gino, can you answer that?
Assisted living is, is it allowed use in a business district?
Okay.
Which means it's also allowed in a planned unit development?
Yes. Thank you. I figured I would have flagged that earlier if it wasn't, but I wasn't remembering. Thanks.
Question right here?
Donald Croushaw, 198 Western Avenue. Listening to your presentation, I got the sense that the retail space that you're thinking of adding to the town would be essentially to serve town residents. And my question is, when you do your economic study, will you assume that it's going to be dependent on the use of only town residents? Or for viability, will it need to attract people from outside the town, which will obviously bring traffic into the town? So, you know, the town's population of about 4,100 is very limited. So adding 20,000 to 25,000 square feet of new retail space on top of what exists must be evaluated as to whether it will be sufficient for only use by people in this town? Or are you dependent on bringing in traffic from surrounding towns?
The question was, would the retail that we're planning, the amount, be viable with the, the amount of residences within the town? Or would it be, would it have to go beyond the town into other towns and attract people from other towns to come to the, to shop there? It's a great question. So what determines the viability of retail is the, particularly is the amount of existing traffic that is on the, in the street right now. And I mentioned before, it's anywhere from 26,000 to 29,000 cars per day. And that deems it as a very good retail, or a very good catchment area. And, and that would say that we don't need the, the people from other towns to come in and make it viable. We, and, and the other towns like Natick and maybe Medfield and some other, the other towns, they, they have services like these, like, you know, Medfield has Brothers Marketplace. Natick has Price Chopper. So if you do a market in Sherborne, they're not going to come here specifically for the market, because they already have that within their town. Everyone's looking, because of traffic these days, just drive the shortest amount of time possible. So we're looking for this to provide services for the residences of Sherborne, and then also the crossover, you know, say if someone's going from Natick to Medfield, they live in Medfield, but they work in Natick, and on the way home, they want to stop at the market to get some, some food. You know, that would be a car that would be, already be on the road. It wouldn't be a new car that would be on the road. So that's, that's our plan for this type of, of retail. Yes?
Neil Castello, 43 Glitch Farm. One follow-up to what somebody else was asking in a separate question, but the follow-up is, in terms of permitting, and this might be more aimed at planning board. So we had the Coolidge Street projects that had, it was an EA project, it needed a zoning change. So maybe we don't need that zoning change. But does this project in its current sort of proposed form, will it need to go to town meeting for any kind of approval, or will it just be through planning?
Want us to answer that? You want to answer that, or you want us to?
Yes. It would, it would only need a special permit.
The question, the question was, is, does the development need to go through a town meeting vote to get approved? Or is there some other mechanism, special permit process that, for approval?
It would need a special permit from the planning board. However, a, a market of 8,000 or 10,000 square feet would need a zoning change that would have to go to a town meeting. Assisted living and small retail can be done through the planned unit development special permit. That planned unit development special permit has a limit on the size of a retail of 2,500 square feet. So a market larger than that would not work without a zoning change.
Sarah, back there?
Sarah, ID 17, Abbey Road. And just, I have two questions, or one is just a thought to share with you. First question is, do you know the size of the Dover Marketplace? Just for those of us that have spatial issues about picturing what, what this kind of square footage looks like?
Yeah.
Or Brothers or the market on.
Yeah. The question, the question was about the size of, like the Dover Market or Brothers in Medfield. What size markets are those currently now? I believe the Dover Market, and don't quote me on this, but I believe it's around 6,000 to 8,000 square feet, whereas the Brothers Marketplace is more in the 12,000 to 15,000 range. We spoke specifically with two brothers, and they, they weren't interested in the site, because they, they needed a bigger store. That is their smallest store in Medfield, and they're looking to build bigger stores, still under the, the, you know, their main flagship.
So the second.
Yep.
Thought is, it sounds to me as if so much of your planning hinges on infrastructure and knowing where the water's going to come from and how that's all going to look. Do you, can you tell the town what you had in mind for what costs the development would there and what cost the town would assume? And I'm thinking that somehow all of this conversation isn't even worth having until you have that known.
Yes. Yeah. The question was, the infrastructure is such a large piece of, of our project in determining how big or how small are the pieces? And do we have that information in terms of how much this would cost the town and also cost us and the financial piece of it? And yes, we have thought long and hard about that and have received estimates on a sewage treatment plant. And like I mentioned before, it's, it's in the range of 1.5 to $2 million. We would probably use around, I believe, 30%, and the town would use 70%. It would be expandable from there. The, the idea is that with a, with a partnership, there are a number of mechanisms that we could, we could do to, to make it feasible for the town, for us. And as we mentioned, there are a lot of benefits of doing this now, because the current situation is not healthy, it's not economically feasible, once those septics fail. This is the, this is the, sort of the future. This is what we're proposing. And we feel with the next steps, we can talk to the town leaders and come up with a plan financially to make it work. And then we'll come back, and the town would, you know, either vote on it, or, you know, we would hear feedback on that part of it.
Just to add to that, one other thing from the town's perspective to look at is some mass work spreads from the state that, for public infrastructure, there are some grants available that we could, as a town, look into if we did want to move forward. So it'd be a private developer, state, and town funded project.
Will there be anything on the, in this year's warrant at town meeting a little later today?
Not that I know of at this point, but.
Question, back there?
Alex Weatherall, 21 South Main Street. Sort of on that topic, and related to the previous question, you know, could you tell us how you, or perhaps how you and Gino, since he's here, will take advantage of, how that would progress, the, the treatment plan? What is the next step? Who has the decision? Is it the planning board? Is it a town meeting? How would that work?
The question is, what is sort of the next steps to figuring out the wastewater treatment facility and how the public partnership, public-private partnership could work, you know, with Gino and the rest of the town leaders? We did take a first step, and that was to, to, to look at the ball fields and actually see if we could actually do the treatment facility there. And we did, and, and actually is good soil. That was the first test, and could have been a showstopper right away if, if it wasn't perked, if it didn't perk. The next step would be to, you know, come up with a plan, a financial plan, whether it would be targeting state grants, public, you know, state and federal grants, whether it would be, you could, you know, tax revenues, whether it would be, there are a lot of different mechanisms that could come into play to help the town pay for the, the public waters, I mean, I'm sorry, the sewage treatment facility. And we would contribute to that. That could be one way of doing it, because instead of building, you know, septic fields or a septic field for the assisted living operator, the cost of that could go, be contributed to the public wa, public water supply, the sewage treatment facility. So that, that's, we would have to have a discussion about that. We don't know just yet. We would actually look to other towns to see what they've done, because this has been done in the past.
And I guess what I'm asking, would the momentum for you to continue forward on that option two, ball field sewage treatment, would the momentum come from a nod, a positive nod from the planning board, or does that rely on a town meeting vote?
I believe that doesn't need a town meeting vote. We're just, we came, we came to the board of selectmen meeting. We're just, we came to the Board of Selectmen meeting probably about a month and a half ago, and what we were looking for is sort of a good gracious kind of, you know, not thumbs up from the leaders, but more of, hey, this could work. We didn't want to go too far or commit too much to this project unless we knew that the town leaders were positive about the potential of this. And so that's sort of where we have left it. And so far, we've heard that there, you know, some of the, there is some good, you know, ideas behind this and people do want to see this happen. But we really haven't really got to the town meeting whether it has to be voted on or all that. You might want to add to it.
John Higley, fourteen Saddlebrook Road and Planning Board. Any big project like this requires, option two, where the town would be in some way participating in it as a partner of some kind, is going to require the town spending a lot of money. That's got to go to town meeting. So any kind of project that's going to require the town making a big investment is, that's got to go to town meeting and through our normal process of hearings on the warrant articles and then at-town meeting to vote on.
Back there?
Another question on sizing comparisons. The regional school facility is eleven hundred students and it has its own waste treatment facility. Is it larger than that type of project? Is it the same size? Is it smaller?
It's different. And actually, Ray, this might be a good time to talk about. And so the question was, is the, you specifically telling about the Pine Hill School?
No, Dover Sherborne.
Oh, the Dover Sherborne. Yeah, whether, how our facility would compare into the, compare to the Dover Sherborne facility. I don't really know if we know that answer because we would have to do some research on the Dover Sherborne.
The reason I ask is just understanding what it takes to operate. I mean, the region is operating a waste treatment facility. We have, we had, or I was on the school committee, I'm aware of, we had outside maintenance contracts to make sure it was really smoothly flexed, but it's manageable? Or is this something that?
I believe the wastewater treatment facility, what the annual maintenance costs are usually around sixty.
Somewhere between sixty and, say, eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, sixty and eighty thousand dollars a year. That, I would see that would be very similar to what we would be doing if those are what, if that's what Dover Sherborne is spending on their facility. Addie?
Addie Weiss, one Jackson move, and a member of the planning board. Daryl or Gino, am I correct that the current ballpark, the ball fields are currently the septic leach for the conventional septic system for Pine Hill?
Yes.
The leach of the ballpark, the fields are currently a leach field? They're maybe given to us as being the current leach field, right?
Although, so Daryl Beardsley, fifty-four, Forestry, Board of Health. I asked one of our agents to pull any information on that field from our files, and I haven't had a chance to talk to him about whether we had any information because that was installed some time ago. So there is a question, you know, how deep is the groundwater? What do the seaters look like? How many places did they test?
Way back there?
Andrew Sylvia, thirty Elliott Street. You stated that the plan for the wastewater would be about one and a half million and two million. And your goal was that you would take thirty percent of that. How much are you contributing to the cost of it?
So we haven't, we have, the question was, if we're taking thirty percent and the town would take seventy percent, it would cost one point five to two million dollars, how much would we contribute to that? That has yet to be figured out because we would need to figure out how much, if this plan didn't go forward, how much we would probably spend on septic fields. And so we haven't really come up with that exact number yet, and that would be part of the next step, is to work with the town to see what would be financially feasible.
And that's kind of pushing the answer?
Yeah.
You knew it was seventy and thirty for your goal for consumption.
Yep.
So what's your goal for what you want to contribute?
I don't think, we haven't really talked about exactly what that number, exactly what that number is yet.
So you were able to calculate exactly what you wanted to take but not what you wanted to get back?
Because we wanted a discussion with the town on that. What, I mean, it's not like we're trying to get out of it not paying anything. We're going to work with the town and contribute something to that. We just haven't figured out that number yet. Right here?
John DeSalo, forty-four North Main Street. So, I mean, my biggest concern, I live across the street, and, you know, I have fifteen minutes of water. And I know that this is the biggest well the town's seen, twenty thousand gallons a day. I know that you talked about the man property potentially needing additional wells, you know, if you push that to forty thousand gallons a day, you know, that's a lot of water rolling down the hill into ball fields. And, you know, the concern is, you know, from a health standpoint there and in shortage of water. But I just don't understand how the town would be the majority user because you're putting a hundred and twenty beds in, you're potentially putting as much density for condos or whatever you put up in man property. You know, it just seems like with the retail and everything else, like, that's doubling the size of the town, and it just seems like that's the most people who would be living there residential and using that water on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah.
So I just don't understand how we get, you know, thirty, seventy, and how that's helping the town.
Yeah.
Because it seems like you guys need it to even do the property, but yet the town will continue to survive as it is.
Yeah. And we're getting more into the details exactly, depending on the density that we were able to put on the site and will put on the site. And we have to dig into exactly what the town is currently using. We will get into that further. Ray, do you want, can you answer a little bit about the amount that our development would take in terms of the wastewater treatment facility? And also, also the town and how much, if whether we expanded to North Main Street and South Main Street? It's probably a little bit out of, yeah, we just haven't done that level of study yet.
And I bring it up, I mean, my biggest concern is that I have fifteen minutes of water in my house.
Yeah.
So that's the most water being pulled out of the ground anywhere. There's expansion for more. And, you know, I just, where all that water's going and all the densest population in Sherborne now, seems to be like it would be the majority user of the wastewater.
Yeah. It's all good points, and I do want to be transparent here and say that we're not answering questions because we know them, but we don't want to divulge the answers. We actually have not done the studies. It takes a lot of commitment from the owner to hire the consultants, to dig up the information, to study the information, and we're just not at that point yet. And we're coming here in good faith and saying, you know, is this a good project? Is this something that you're interested in? If it is, if we get a good feeling, we would keep moving forward. This isn't something that's going to be built tomorrow. It's going to take a long time. But we fear, we feel it's beneficial for the town, and it could be beneficial for our development. But as I mentioned, something eventually is going to be built here, and now is the opportunity to take advantage. And it was right in the Town Center housing study. You know, if this opportunity came up, the town should take advantage of it. And this is why we're here proposing this. Question?
Robert Johnson, two seven two Western Avenue, and I have two questions. The first, under the more limited plan where we're only talking about this piece of property and the septic and well being within that property. I would believe that that would have to be a public water supply for eighty to a hundred and twenty people living there three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And doesn't a public water supply require quite a significant diameter of undisturbed area? And where are you going to get that undisturbed area within that plot of land as you showed? It looked like it was almost entirely covered by buildings and pavement. That's question one.
I don't have to repeat that, right? Because, thank you. We, the idea would be to put the well over on the east side of the, I'm sorry, the west side of the tracks on the man property essentially, and that would give us the amount required.
Okay, so the two are linked even under the plan, simplest plan?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Question two. There are currently two eating facilities in town, both of them almost adjacent to your property. And so you're looking at a café and a restaurant. And so where would these fit in price-wise relative to the existing? You know, are you going to be, try to be more expensive than the Heritage, less expensive than the Heritage, the same cost? And relative to C and L Frosty? Again, where are you in cost? Are you going to be competing or looking for a different market?
Yeah. We, in terms of the dining and the level of dining, we haven't really even gotten there yet. We haven't talked to restaurants. We would like something that is on par with the Heritage. It's a great restaurant. I could see another one like it in the same place, you know, in the, in the house, the renovated house. But we haven't really, we haven't gotten there yet in terms of what type of restaurant and what level. So.
Relative to the café or?
Yeah, café.
C and L Frosty?
Yeah, café would be more of a mom and pop type of coffee shop, café. Someone that, you know, wouldn't, like I mentioned, it wouldn't be a Starbucks, it wouldn't be a national chain. I just don't think that they would come into this market. This is built more for someone that wants to open up independently.
So basically, you would be competing with what we already have immediately adjacent?
Yeah. Sort of, yeah, being in the retail industry for a long time, it's more about creating synergies with other retailers. When you have a restaurant right next to another restaurant, a diner goes there and they actually have more choices. So it actually increases the volume and the viability of, say, the Heritage to actually have another restaurant right next to it. I know that seems odd, but it actually is true. It's called clustering. And that's why retail environments like Newbury Street, like, you know, Concord Center work because there's multiple coffee shops, there's multiple restaurants, there's choices. And that's what people go there for. They don't.
It might be less likely to leave town.
Exactly, exactly.
The Heritage every time they go up to.
They want choices, exactly. Question?
Do towns our size actually make money on septic treatment facilities of this size? Or are they simply ongoing costs that have worked into the tax structure of the town because we think they offer us some anorfas medicines? Is there actual profit section?
We don't know that yet. I think the next step is the economic impact analysis, and we would hire a consultant to do that. And they would be able to pull historical data from other towns similar in size. And I think we'd be able to find that out from that, but right off the bat, we don't know that until we take that next step. Way back there.
Let me interrupt. And I have a question, but I want to take my turn. But we've gone almost an hour and a half, and maybe with a show of hands, how many people would like to continue, say, another half hour? Okay, so that's.
An hour.
So we'll do that. But I think we should expect this to end at not longer than two hours.
Do you want to do your question now or you want to?
Well, now that you ask. We were talking about, you were talking about, and we've all been talking about testing of different things and getting more information, and we did talk quite a bit about water supply. Has there been consideration or would you consider doing more than the state required, the standard forty-eight hour pump test, and look outside of that with maybe another few monitoring wells to characterize the aquifer in the area? Not just for, because of a butter concerns that already have expressed concerns about, because their own experience with their wells. But also, this, characterizing our drinking water aquifer long-term is a really good thing, and we should look for ways to do that. Sorry, to do that as a town, to understand long-term, we like to think long-term, about what's the quality and the sustainability of our drinking water. So this is an opportunity for the town to understand more about the aquifer that we, in that area. It's also an opportunity to understand, for you to understand more about the viability and sustainability and to protect the abutters.
Yep. We would absolutely do that. I did ask that question and had the conversation with our consultant, specific to the monitoring wells, and we would work with the town to place monitoring devices on anything, you know, on the wells that we were testing. That wouldn't be a problem at all. And does that answer your question?
Part, seventy percent. The other part is, how about additional monitoring, specifically monitoring wells outside, in addition to the pumping well, look at an adjacent well to kind of characterize the aquifer?
Absolutely. Because if we're impacting the greater community or the area around us, we would want to know that information and be able to be transparent in exactly what we're taking and using for water and how that affected the rest of the community. So, question?
Charlie Sapman, twenty-eight, Hunter Lane. On your slide deck, and the first option, was it without the wastewater? Is it just septic?
So the first, the first option is septic, yes.
And so would you be able to do the project without the wastewater?
Would we be able to do the project without, with just septic?
Yeah.
Yes. That's the way we were moving forward with this project.
Same scale.
Same scale, yeah. Well, it was the eighty-bed memory care, and we were, we confirmed with the facility that we're able to, they were able to do it and we were able to do it. Back there.
Let me get some confidence here. Perfect. My name is Parker Dodd. I've lived in Sherborne for twenty-eight years. My father's lived here for fifty years, and my father's parents have lived here before him. I live on two-ten Washington Street. My main concern is the economic impact of the development. And I know that you discussed that, you know, we can't get finite numbers yet or even a basis of. However, my concern would be addressing both the real estate in Sherborne of increasing the supply of homes. It would also have to do with how the residents of Sherborne benefit themselves. I do know, as we've discussed, that we do have restaurants and cafes already here. We even have business retail space still open for lease that hasn't been filled, even from past developments. It's of my personal opinion that a lot of people in, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, move here to Sherborne because of the kind of tight-knit community that it is. The fact that we can watch horses go down the street or we have roads that aren't paved. In fact, that's part of the most beautiful part of town for me, is going in the back roads with the unpaved roads, the farms and the fields. And when I see, you know, the restaurant, the café, again, we have one right next to the Heritage, but the market, when we have douses right there, when we can support a local family that's been here forever, and we also have farms on the other side in Western Ave, we obviously have our produce right there. Other than that, I guess my family and I go to Natick, to the farmer's market. That's a lot of fun. I wish we had that in Sherborne. You know, I haven't really seen, I know the Mother's Day Fair is pretty awesome. I don't know if everybody else enjoys that, but I sure do. So I would just like to make sure that the economic impact really is in the best interest of the people. And I know that we talked about the water supply, and I do believe that, you know, that could be an issue that to be addressed. I'm not sure that the development in itself is something that should be tagged along with it. And I guess I just wanted to express my concern of that and to get an unbiased economic impact that maybe wasn't done by the developers themselves or the people that they hire, but perhaps maybe someone that the town votes on to do an impact to how it might affect them and their retail prices of their homes.
Yeah. Great questions. Thank you. First off, the whole idea of smart growth is to develop in sort of existing downtowns and not on farmlands and those roads that the horses go down. So the idea is that we're not touching those places. We're looking at developing within the town center, the commercial, you know, center of the town. And I feel personally. And, and I feel personally that, that a lot of the businesses aren't filled up because, um, they don't have room to improve or expand. And they can't do that with the current system that's in place, with the current septic systems, um, being right next to the wells. Um, having the ability to tap into a wastewater treatment facility gives these businesses much more flexibility, um, to expand. And, um, any, in terms of the, the, what Sherborne would benefit from this is, is you would benefit with tax revenue. Um, from the assisted living, from the retail. And this would be shown by an economic impact consultant. Um, and those types of studies are usually done first by the developer and then, uh, peer reviewed by the town, uh, the town's consultant. So we would be, um, you know, we would be open to doing that as well. And I, I do think the next step in this is to, to actually calculate what the impact is of this development on the financials. And whether it does increase the value of the properties downtown, um, by having the ability to tap into the wastewater treatment facility.
And I guess, so I want to thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing was on the taxes. The one thing I have never seen is a tax reduction. Um, I don't believe that's going to happen. We might get a half a percent or a percent one year, but they'll make up for it the following year. I'm sure of it.
So taxes, taxes only go up. We, we, we all know that. But we can control how much they go up from here by being proactive. And that's the idea is that we're not trying to reduce where it's at right now, but they're still going up and they're going to keep going up. Particularly with, you know, for example, if the septic system fails for the Pine Hill School. It's going to be very costly to fix that. Uh, it's an old system and, um, having a wastewater treatment facility, uh, in place would be, I would think, much more economically, um, viable than redoing an entire, you know, building a new system. And so that would be something that would go on everyone's taxes to have to rebuild. So we got to look at the finances here and I agree, we can't answer as many questions that we want, as I want to here or you want me to. Because we don't have that information yet, but we're looking to kind of say, hey, people, do you, do you want a market? Do you want, um, you know, more tax revenue? Do you, you know, a walkable, you know, nice downtown with another restaurant? You know, do we want those things? And, you know, and, and, and the infrastructure that isn't, that is going to drive that, you know, which option do we want? Do we want to just, do we want to just do the, uh, traditional septic system and wells? Do we, or do we want to, uh, partner with the town and try to create a win-win situation? That's, that's sort of the, the next step.
That's fair. Thank you. I didn't take that in consideration.
Thanks. Question?
Suzie Wheelwright, Hunting Lane, one thirty-seven Hunting Lane. Uh, I guess my question is, how, can you give us three examples of towns of similar size? Where, um, a memory care or assisted living facility has anchored a new development? That has increased the vibrancy of the downtown?
Do I have to repeat that? Question? Um, has, do, can I give, could we have given example of a, um, assisted living facility? That has increased the, um, vibrancy, uh, of a town, an existing town center? Three, you need three, okay. Similar size of Sherborne with septic and wells. On the north side of the tracks. I would love to do this as a research project as soon as I get home and get back to you. And I'm, and I, and I probably would be able to come up with some. Does, is an assisted living facility the greatest in terms of putting people on the street and, and all that? But, you know, in some cases it is, it's because if someone goes and visits a grandparent that is in, is in the assisted living facility and then goes out to a restaurant. Um, you know, or the workers that are working in there go out to lunch. You know, there's just a, a level of, right now, there's nothing on the site, no action, nothing. And this is sitting right in the smack dab of the town center. And the idea is to make a viable, friendly, walkable downtown that we all picture in, in the books. And does an assisted living, uh, facility meet the, meet exactly that? No, but it definitely add, I believe it adds to it. Does it add as much as, you know, a, um, an apartment building does? No. But it definitely adds to some level. But I will do some research and get back to you because I believe there is. Yes.
I keep hearing, you know, how we've done the market analysis, tax analysis, traffic impact analysis. With the economics, we're not sure about contribution, we don't know about fall parts. So, you know, you're sitting here asking all of us to kind of support something. Yeah, it sounds good to the town center. But are you seriously thinking that we're going to have an answer for you, for you without that kind of feedback? To, um, the earlier gentleman's question, we've talked a lot about the developer. We've talked about the town. What about the abutters and the neighbors? Who's protecting them? In order for us to be able to articulate anything that's going to answer the question presumably that you're asking us. I think we need more answers. I think we need, you know, kind of more than a look into it and let me get back to you. We're going to have that traffic analysis or, you know, economic analysis or whatnot. That's the sentiment that I get. I think I've heard a lot of that. Personally, you know, living where I live and hearing about potentially, I don't think we're able to answer the question. By Mr. Somerville, about even a hundred and fifty houses that could potentially pop up on Hunting Lane. I think, you know, I kind of want to hear a little bit more.
So, great questions. And so the, the question is, or it wasn't a question, it's more of a observation. Why don't we come with more information? We're sort of, uh, jumping the gun a little bit. Um, and all the questions are coming to us and we're answering when, well, we have to go back and do more studies. And I, I see how that's coming across as, um, you're right. We, we don't have the answers right now, but this is part of what I specialize in as a consultant, uh, development consultant. And also, um, doing my other, uh, development projects is reach out to community. We get out, um, as soon as possible, even if we don't have the answers and listen to feedback. I can point to every town and there's been stories of developers coming in and they don't do what we're doing right now. Where we're talking and, and asking for feedback. I'm sorry, we don't have the exact numbers on, um, how much a sewage treatment plant costs for eighty beds. And who's going to pay for it down to the dime? I mean, that's something that's going to come along with the process with, with, with outreach and talking. Everybody has certain questions. We're not there yet and, and I think it's a, it's a testament to the owner that he is actually committed to bringing consultants at this point, bringing in, um, me as a consultant to try to gather feedback. See, if, even if you want a market, is an assisted living, um, the right use for the, for the, for the land? Now, in terms of the abutters, no one wants anything. I mean, sometimes you don't want anything built next to you, but, um, it's a town center. And some people want a market. Some people want, uh, an assisted living or, or, um, to control their taxes. So the idea is that we're here trying to listen to everybody. We're not going to have all the answers and even the next meeting, when we do the economic impact analysis and we have the answers, there's going to be more answers. It's going to be like, well, what are the, you know, what are the details of the well and how are you going to build it and where are you going to put it? And how deep is it going to go? Well, we don't have those answers yet. We're going to have to go get, go get those answers. So we're never going to have enough of the answers. But that's part of the public process and this is why, this is why we're here. Question?
I'd like to go out on a limb and say I'd like a market. And I'd like a restaurant and I'd like a cafe. So I do think it would enhance the vibrancy. Sorry, I didn't start with my name. Betsy Lee, um, Wildwood Drive. And I think that it would also help our property values. I think that people are turned off from Sherborne because there's nothing here and they've never heard of it. So I do think it would help our property values as well. Um, I do have one question though. I think a lot of assisted living and memory care units are actually run as nonprofits. So I'm actually interested to see if, um, we would get tax dollars on the, on that as a facility. Or if we could control to make sure that we would be getting appropriate tax revenue from that.
Yeah, thank you. Do I have to repeat that? No.
Pretty loud.
You're pretty loud, so. Um, yes, so we, uh, the operatives that we have been talking to are not, are for-profit, they're non-for-profit. Um, so we would be receiving, uh, tax revenues from, from that. In terms of the, you know, wanting a market, wanting a cafe, uh, wanting, uh, to control taxes. You know, that's, that's exactly why we're promoting the, to, to, to build the restaurant, the retail, the, the market. In the assisted, and again, the, the, the retail and the market, those really aren't the generators, uh, to make profit on a project. To, to purchase land and then get a return on that, you, you're not just going to build some small retail establishments. It's really coming from the assisted living operator. That's where the, the profit is coming from, to be, the ability to build all of this. So.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just? Adding my voice and I'm just jumping in here as, um, a member of the planning board to just, um, I guess a refresher on where we've been as a town, that this is something that's, this parcel of land has been discussed for development for a long time. When it was owned by Fitzpatrick, it was discussed for development and, and even probably before that. And then as far as a town and what the town wants, there's been discussions for a long time on that level as well. There was a two thousand fourteen survey that went townwide and asked what would people like to see in town? What makes the community work? So some of what kind of is being proposed has taken into account what, through, historically, people in town have said they wanted. A coffee shop, a place to meet, a place to, to, um, you know, have some, a walk around and, and get a few groceries. So this is something that's, um, as far as the planning board, we've heard discussions and we do appreciate a developer coming to town and, and having done some due diligence and read the past studies. Certainly, I think we can all appreciate, there, a lot of these studies do cost money. And so as a town, we do need to decide what is it, do we still think we want these things? Um, and also realize that to a degree, development is not all in our control. There's a lot of parcels in our, in our town, as we've seen over the last couple of years, that could be developed and we'd have no control over them. So the question tonight has, is somewhat on examining whether or not as a town, are we embracing an idea of doing a, a town-wide, um, I guess a public-private partnership? And there, and again, there are studies that need to be done to find out, I know we can't always say would, how much do we want that until we know the costs and benefits. And so that's some of what is tonight. And I'm just saying, if anyone wants to go onto our town website, there are numerous documents that support the history of the land development and what's been going on and studies and the planning board has a page with number of documents also. So there's certainly support and it's not just all of a sudden and there's no question, no answer, no research done.
Back there?
I just want to point out for people, there was a two thousand eleven study done by the town that determined that you could double the size of the commercial development downtown and it would generate a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in additional taxes. Which was zero point seven percent of our two thousand eleven budget. I went through the same analysis, hoping that the assessments are all of it, commercial property downtown and came up basically with the identical number.
Okay.
So I think this, I think we keep hearing about commercial development will somehow contribute meaningfully to our fiscal problems. This, uh, bogus argument to me. But it's housing, it's not retail. That's completely different basis than what that study's done. It was not contemplating putting housing into downtown and assisted living as a form of housing which has a valuation far in excess of retail.
Right there, question?
Yorin Bukiki, forty-one Hunting Lane. I'd just like to follow up on your response to Mr. Lee Johnson's question a little bit earlier. And he had asked you about the placement of the well. And I want to make sure that I have this right. The well that you're contemplating supporting this commercial enterprise is on land and zone residential?
Yes.
Does that seem fair?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah.
I mean, could I start Sherborne Springs hold water from my well and start selling that to the detriment of my neighbors?
Does the well, well, we would have to find out if the well would have any impact on the, on, on, on. But visually, visually, it wouldn't have any impact, right?
We're asking, we're at, the question I'm asking is, is it fair to site a well on residential property of output of which is being used to support a commercial enterprise?
We, this question did come up and we did, um, the question is, um, can you put a resident, can you put a well serving commercial uses on residential land? And we did look into this and we could not find anything that, um, didn't allow doing this. We are still searching for information and, and seeking out consultants that may know more answers. Um, but from what we've learned so far, there is no, nothing in the, in this, in the local, um, town of Sherborne, uh, laws or state or federal that, that doesn't, um, you know, allow us to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Neil Kessler, forty-three Page Bar Road, taking off my conservation commission path at the moment. I just had a couple of questions because somebody asked earlier what your, what the developer would be willing to contribute to the running of a wastewater treatment facility. And when that person said, well, if you're going to use thirty percent, would you pay for thirty percent of it? And we said, well, we need to go and look at how much it would cost to run a private septic. So I'm just going to use this sort of calculator for a second. So thirty percent of two million dollars would be six hundred thousand. If you could develop leaching fields, septic fields, that were not part of a wastewater treatment facility, that cost you two hundred thousand dollars. Would you offer the town two hundred thousand dollars toward the wastewater treatment and let the town shoulder the burden of the rest of it? Or would you be willing to spend more for the sort of win-win, get the goodwill of the town? Because I think conceptually the town is okay with the idea of developing there, but the devil's in the details. So my question is, as a sort of goodwill gesture, would the developer be willing to shoulder the burden of their actual use? Not sort of their bottom line?
Yes. The question is, uh, would the developer, uh, be open to, um, uh, contributing, um, more than just the thirty percent that we would be using?
Oh, thirty percent. Cause when you, somebody asked you that and you said, well, it depends on what it would cost to run it privately if we didn't do the wastewater treatment. So I took that as meaning, well, if that was cheaper, that's all we could contribute, even if we used more. So are you saying you are willing to contribute the percentage that you would actually use? Or something smaller and let the town shoulder the burden for the rest?
Okay.
Essentially something larger. I think that's where we can come from.
Yes, and, and we don't, we don't know right now, but we would, um, that's the calculation that we need to come up with. And to see if it's financially feasible for us to contribute more, we definitely would. I mean, if, if, if you were to take thirty percent of a two million dollar cost, you said it's six hundred thousand dollars. If the state, if the state came at, at you right now, or, or the planning board went after a state grant and was able to get six hundred thousand dollars to build a wastewater treatment plant. You know, maybe the, maybe the room would be like, yeah, I'll, I'll take that deal any day. So that's kind of, I, I don't know exactly if that's what we're saying. We're going to give six hundred thousand dollars, but it's in, it's along those lines. And then we'll work with the town, whether it's more or less. That's, yeah. You, someone back there?
I was just hoping you would call on some people who haven't spoken yet.
Absolutely. So, um, I don't think that you, yep, right here.
Sarah Roy, thirty-two Hunting Lane. Uh, my question is about the, um, you talked about drilling your wells on, um, residential property. But isn't it also a zone for protected wetlands where you're putting those wells?
It is, but, um, where the, where we're planning to put the well on, um, the man property. The, the, um, west of the tracks, uh, it's on a dry piece of land, um, within the wetlands. Um, and we're able to have a well there as long as it produces, um, the amount of water that we need for the development.
So my, my concern would be the effect that could potentially have on that area.
Yep, and I think that, that brings up a point about the monitoring wells, um, and digging, uh, multiple wells in that area to make sure that, uh, what it, what are the impacts? And make sure we are showing the, the, the abutters and the people that would be affected. And make sure we are showing the abutters and the people that would be affected if they would have any impact on them.
Yeah, I also just want to add that our well also runs dry.
Yep. Thank you.
If I could, one more, just call on the wells. If you were to do the well on Hunting Lane, you're looking for 20,000 gallons a day, right?
Somewhere like that, yeah. Yeah.
If you figure, us, four uses 400 gallons a day, that's the equivalent of 50 houses, drawing water from that property and then not recharging that property, but sending the discharge across Main Street into the wellfields. Has that been done anywhere before? And is there any experience with taking that much water out of the property and not recharging it on the same property?
There are certainly experiences. How well it's studied is another matter, which I could go on for at length on, but...
And if I couldn't, so, my understanding also that this would be a public or municipal one, so the Board of Health would have no jurisdiction of it? Is that true or is that...
That is correct. Unless it was part of negotiations around, you know, what are the various ways that the town is partnering to some degree with this project? In which case, the board has been discussing what things we'd be interested in seeing. We haven't taken any votes. Nothing has been done formally because we don't really have any formal proposals to evaluate. But the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is the one who would grant the permits for this and has the regulations that govern it and would keep track of its performance. In the past, when these kinds of wells were put in, they do require monitoring to be installed in existing wells in the area of the proposed new well to see what the impacts are on those neighbors. So, some number, over a decade ago, I did talk to a municipality who was putting in bedrock wells. And bedrock wells are less common for water supply. It's all we really have a choice of here in town, so we don't have overburden aquifers so much. But the testing that that town had done went on for six months. They no longer require six months of testing. It's more in the order of a week or a few weeks, something like that. So, we may want to look at something different. We may want to look at how far from that point do you try to monitor wells to see what the impact will be. It's a very difficult topic just because of the way fractures are in bedrock. It's unpredictable to try to even know what's going on is nearly scientifically impossible at the moment because we don't see underground so well. So, it's a complicated topic. And I think with increasing development, it is a common resource and we don't understand the dynamics fully. So, the question is, how can we analyze it upfront to have an idea of what might be happening? And then, the long-term sustainability is a question. Few people have mentioned wells going dry and the Board of Health has seen a lot more replacement wells and well deepening in the last year or so. So, there is, something is changing. And we know that we've had several drought periods, so there is some cumulative effect of that for that. So, is it droughts? Is it development? It's really hard to say. I did, for the reason I really came up here, it's, and the Board of Health would be happy. Am I not getting the mic very well? Oh, yes, even I can hear that. Okay. While I was sitting here, because the issue of costs is, you know, that is a big one. So, I took a look to see what might be available online. Because in the past, I've tried to find out what wastewater treatment plants would cost and it's really hard to know without the specifics. However, Barnstable County on Cape Cod was always trying to figure out what's going on with wastewater and water quality, so we can benefit from work that they've done. This one is a little old, 2010. They did comparison of costs for wastewater management systems applicable to Cape Cod. So, I'm just mentioning it because it might be a resource either for you or for the town because one of the questions it'd be is, whose job is it to figure out what the cost is for this? And do we, does the town want to rely on somebody else when we may be bearing the cost of paying for and running it? So, there are, I'll just really summarize. They took a look, actual cost information was obtained from over 30 existing wastewater treatment facilities located largely in southeastern Massachusetts. There is big economy of scale depending on what size. So, they had kind of 10,000 gallons per day, 100,000 gallons per day, and a million gallons per day is a breakdown. At 10,000 gallons a day, it's for construction, $70 per gallon. So, that would be 700,000. Yes, for 10,000 gallons. So, that would be closer to two-something million. And if we're talking 40,000 gallons a day, it's closer to 3 million. The operating costs were $13 per gallon. And so, that is, let's see. So, that's a few, well, at 10,000, that would be $130,000 per year for operating costs. At 30,000, that's 400,000 roughly. So, those are the kind of costs which is pretty different than what we heard. So, you know, knowing which end of the spectrum it's really at. And then, there are issues of just, you can hire folks who run the plants. And that's, I would say, less than those costs. But you have to be ready for all the repairs and other things that come along and for compliance and testing. And so, sometimes those costs, having worked with clients on that, when they come up, they can be a big amount in a short period of time. And then, you go back down to just kind of running the plant. So, anyway, so those are just things to think about. And then, there was something else that came up that someone had a question. Water, wastewater. Oh, the other big concern that the Board of Health has been talking about, again, no votes or decisions, is that as an assisted living, it's likely that there may be more pharmaceuticals in the wastewater and other things in the wastewater. And there are recognized concerns, a lot of publications about medical wastes and that sort of thing. And if that was to be managed centrally, the board is of the opinion that it would be very costly because the diversity of pharmaceuticals is so big that you can't put in just a single technique to try to take that out of the water. So, right now, the board would be more interested in seeing that handled within the facility so that what is going to the wastewater treatment plant was more compatible with standard residential wastes. So, thanks.
Michael Lester, 54, Forest Street. I wear both the conservation commission hat and I'm as a resident. I'll start with, as a resident, I'll say, one question as to what extent, before you do some of the economic financial analysis, let's put that way, to what extent you get input from the business community as to what they're willing to pay and bear when you're trying to figure out. I assume there's going to be some cross proportionate between what you are willing to bear, what the residents are going to bear, both business and residential in that area, as well as what the town somehow will end up bearing. As soon as there's three parties in some aggregate, then somehow that's addressed as part of what you do at the next stage. So, that, a part of it is a broader issue, even just as a resident, of when this next phase of economic analysis comes out, to what extent are we still going to be playing around with a lot of different variables? Which brings me to the question of our own consultants. You have your consultants. I agree, we're trying to do a collaborative process here in a friendly manner. But I'm trying to figure out how it works, that the town has its own independent advice so that we're not left with wondering, how good is that septic cost? If we deal with the fact that it's the pharmaceuticals, if they're not handled and a lot of the medical, it's a big issue, I would think, for the kind of waste characterization that you're going to get for this kind of project versus retail and restaurants and whatever else that have a medical facility, since we do share all the groundwater and it eventually goes to our bedrock water sources, what happens with pharmaceuticals and whether there are processes that do treat them or don't treat them? I know that there's a lot, there's not a lot of good knowledge about that, but whether it should be treated internally, as we just talked about, or not? And what that cost is for a septic treatment plant then, whether it's treated internally or not? So, I guess it's an issue of whether the town needs to get on board with somebody to help us on our side so that we're not sitting around, we, doing another stage of looking at the economic analysis at a meeting like this and saying, well, jeez, how good is that cost? Is it 2 million? Or is it one and a half? Is it two and a half million? And is that going to make a big difference in how people feel about the project versus just, and then there's the next level of to what extent you'll even share, what it means to just do the project on your own site? And the difference, to see that maybe all that risk and uncertainty of doing a bigger project and we're not sure what the town residents, what the town center wants, how we figure out, okay, maybe it's, maybe if you want to get ahead, maybe you should just do the project on your site that's smaller? And how we'd even be able to see that kind of sense, or you have to do it in-house. But I guess for the town, I feel it's a matter of whether we get independent consultants on board sooner. I'll put on a conservation commission hat and say that we just, we started, they're going to do some initial testing across the street there, but very limited, sort of an eight-hour test to see about the possibility of a public water supply, but it's under their private option, basically. That's their private scenario, which is because it serves a lot of people, it's called a public water supply. But the next level is going to include the fact that we will have independent consultants to sort of go over the sustainability of the water supply issue. And it bridges both our purview of wetland protection, but also working with other boards to do it in a concerted way and to look at the sustainability of the drinking water. And so, that we're starting to get the kind of stuff that John started bringing out and that we would have our own consultant, we discussed it, obviously hasn't worked out, but the next phase, we're probably looking to have our own independent consultant to review what it is that would be proposed for the monitoring and testing procedure for looking at that so we could deal with the fact that, how many wells do you monitor? How far do you go? Do you do 2,000 feet from the wellhead, given the structures that are there? Or whatever you could find out, maybe a little more from the drilling logs, who knows what? We'll come up in the next initial phase. That will influence what we want to do in the next phase, when they really see whether they can do it, whether they get the kind of yields that they want under a formal mass EDP. But that's where we would try to do what we think would be in the broader town interest. And it might go beyond what a mass EDP minimally requires. But I, so the town, I think it's a matter of whether we get people on town ahead of time so that the analysis that comes next, I'm having trouble as to where that next analysis could be, what level of detail, what bedding it's going to have before we see it again. Let me grab the phone.
Andrew, if you want to reply to that, I think that's fine, but we want to wrap this up.
Absolutely. I'm not going to repeat that question. But I'll try to answer it or respond to it. I, that is, I believe, what we're looking for from a development team is if we are going to partnership on this venture, you know, the first question that has to be asked is, does the town want a wastewater treatment facility? Do they need a wastewater treatment facility? And there's been many studies in the past, not from us, that you've hired consultants and done some of your own work. And it seems like that I would say yes, from what I've seen online. Now, we're coming in and we're saying, well, we could help offset that cost because we're going to be building and development. And so, what we have to ask the question now is, can we build this development and share in the cost with the wastewater treatment and also share in the wastewater treatment facility ourselves? But we need a commitment from the town because we can't do all these studies. We can't do all these analyses and hire the consultants and on behalf of the town, particularly when the town is going to be using the majority of the, you know, of the treatment plant. So, we're looking to, a little bit of, from the town, whether or not they want to join in on a public-private partnership to explore all the numbers that it's going to take. Because anything that we put in front of you is going to be questioned. You know, is it 1.5 million? Is it $2 million? You know, how much traffic is going to be? We're looking for some assistance because eventually, it's going to be vetted by the town and other consultants. Daryl?
Quick question.
Yep.
It's in with the other.
This will be a first.
All right, maybe not a quick, or comment. So, to the end of the town figuring out about the cost, because what I forgot to mention is that for the Cape Cod study, systems at 100,000 gallons per day were roughly half the construction costs per unit per gallon and about half the operating costs. So, big economies of scale. So, it would be good to know what the flows might be from this project. You've mentioned 20,000, then there's retail, then there's possible other development elsewhere. So, what's the whole amount that might be sought by your project or projects? Because that would affect the sizing of the system and all the rest.
Correct.
I think we got it. We got it. I want to say that all of your participation, all of your questions and information are really an important, a very important part of this whole process. This is an opportunity for the town to consider. It's got to fit our strategy and our interests. And we do that by having these types of conversations and discussions. So, this is really great to do this. And I look forward to the education process that goes all around with these kind of conversations. So, I want to thank, I want to thank you for coming. I really want to thank everybody here and everybody that's been watching. So, with that, I'm going to take a, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn for the planning board. And, so, I'll take that motion.
I'm happy to answer.
It's going to be someone from the planning board. And is there a second? Yeah, a further discussion amongst the planning board? No. So, the meeting is adjourned. And again, thank you, everybody.
Happy to answer the other questions that weren't answered.